That is, if you look at FAMU's trajectory, FAMU's history, FAMU's impact and its gravitas, excellence abounds. However, as higher ed is moving through its changes today, you can see excellence is not enough. We have to get everything done in order of magnitude. So what I first like to do is just mention Florida A and M and just some background on the institution. Top one hundred eighty-one in the country, the strategic plan that was recently passed boldly striking. I would, I would say that is a very, very good strategic plan, but that's what it is, a plan. And part of my presentation today will talk about how do we execute on that plan? And merging that plan with what is there for the Board of Governors. I think everyone knows this, the impact of Florida A and M, the number one public HBCU in the United States, number three overall for HBCUs, and more importantly, and number eighty-one for all public institutions. It is a brand that is known not only nationally but globally, and it will be a distinct honor and pleasure to serve as the president of this institution. My vision for FAMU, my vision is really rooted in the mission statement, vision statement and value statement of FAMU are spot on. They are, they are aligned with what I see, that's necessary for a higher education institution today. But I look at the mission, vision and values in a cascading waterfall, if you will. For us to move from strategy to execution, we have to have some sense of what is happening. So I dare say for those that are probably watching and can't see, I'll just read it for what my presidential vision will be. It simply says, rooted in its rich legacy of educating students at undergraduate, graduate, doctoral and professional levels, the Florida Agricultural and Mechanical University, FAMU, will continue to push the boundaries of academic inquisitiveness, drive cutting-edge research of consequence to common humanity and create innovative and impact, student impactful student success outcomes that will allow graduates to become the social entrepreneurs, our world's needs to lift society to a higher height. This vision will be anchored with an operating ethos embedded within a culture of excellence. That culture of excellence will be grounded in the strategic focus of the three Ps. The three Ps are people, process and performance. And will undergirded by the expectation of OATE. They will be, they will permeate instruction, research, public service, student success and well-being, financial management and the daily operations of the university. The three Ps are foundational to what we will do. We will invest in our people for them to excel in their roles and responsibilities. We will design and implement best-in-class processes to drive programmatic, financial and operational excellence. And we will create a culture of assessment to continuously measure performance across the campus. Now, the expectations are rooted also in OATE. It's a menomic device, O A T E, ownership, accountability, transparency and empowerment. And we'll talk about that as I go through this presentation. So what I wanted to do at the outset is to ground up my presentation in the comparisons of the boldly striking strategic plan for the university and the recently adopted S U S thirty, which is the strategic plan for the Board of Governors. What I tried to do here was to show, even though we have a plan at FAMU called boldly striking, there is an overarching plan from the Board of Governors. What I attempted to do here is to mirror, if you will, how the two plans coalesce around each other. They're not seamless because obviously they're different in some ways, but you could see the plan from the Board of Governors in many ways, the boldly, boldly striking plan from FAMU fits neatly within that plan. So whenever I give a talk and a presentation, I like to start out with maxims. Maxims grounds whatever we're going to say, moving us from one slide to the next. This is a quote that I use often. If your outflow is more than your intake, your downfall will be your upkeep and your assets will be in a bind. In higher education today, be it public or private institutions, everyone, be it board members, presidents, senior leadership teams have to definitely understand this simple maxim. So for FAMU, the first thing out of the gate is stabilizing the finances of the institution. So FAMU is a public institution, so we can grab public data and we can walk through. One of the things I was asked to talk about today are the challenges that are before us. We'll start with the challenges and then we'll move to the solutions and the inspirational thoughts behind it. So if you look at the screen, you can clearly see that FAMU is in, in, in some ways, one can say in fairly good shape and in some ways we need to improve. Improvement is always something that is always top of mind for any leader or any senior leadership team, or for that matter, any board. The one that I'll draw your attention to mostly is the days cash on hand. That is the liquidity of the institution. If your liquidity is not where it needs to be, you will go through what I call fits and starts. No matter how well your programmatic outcomes are, if your finances are not necessarily leading you to a place where you can have confidence that you're going to continually have the resources to carry out your mission and your objectives, you find yourself doing things that keeps you on the margins. So if you look at the, the, the screen, cash to debt, there's a benchmark issue of three hundred and sixty percent. We're way above that for the simple fact FAMU currently has no debt. If you look at our days cash on hand, two hundred and six days, we're at seventy-nine days. I pause here for a moment just to share that the challenge here is you're looking at a situation where best practice should be at least a hundred and twenty days. That's a, that's an area of opportunity for us to move forward. Our operating margins, two percent to four percent, we're at two point nine. The age of our plant for an institution of our age, obviously the age of your plant is going to be an issue. I will skip the next one and talk a little bit about some of the prevailing challenges we have today. As we're sitting here today, the N C A A house settlement is still making its way. When that gets settled, we have to ask ourselves fundamentally, what does our athletic program look like? How do we afford to operate in the same spaces that we were? Those of you that are tuned to the news, you'll see what's happening with federal grants, the caps on indirect cost rates and in some instances losing, I think FAMU here lost about sixteen point three million dollars. What do you do in that context when your revenues are basically challenged upfront? There is a White House initiative that still yet unknown what the outcomes will be. But obviously, if we are going to look into that, we have to figure out what that means for the institution. Alumni giving, in, in my presentation going forward, you're going to see me talk about the need to diversify revenues and obviously auxiliary enterprises. How do you get business-like activities at this institution to drive the performance of the university overall? So the first thing that I would say, solution oriented and get everyone to understand, net tuition revenue is a key component of the budget of FAMU. However, in the state system, we have not had the luxury of having a tuition increase in thirteen years. Thirteen years is a very long time. However, thanks to the Board of Governors, thanks to the legislature and thanks to the governor, we continue to have robust support from the legislature for our, our, basically our operations. But what I am interested in is moving FAMU from just simply talking about the base and keeping the lights on, but is moving FAMU to become a preeminent institution. Becoming a preeminent institution unlocks other resources that we currently don't necessarily partake of. And you can see the diversification there. All of those are things that are done at FAMU today. However, they need a new focus. For example, if you look at this screen, annual fundraising is separate and distinct from alumni giving and engagement. Why is that? That is because the alumni giving and engagement has to move to another level. That other level meaning that it has to have a focus where our alums are coming home. There is no way to diversify your revenue streams without looking at all of these areas. I've had the good fortune of working at an institution where we set a target that no single revenue stream should top twenty-five percent of the total. I think that's a utopian goal for us here at Florida A and M. The next maxim that I want to share is, what we want to avoid at all costs is the unqualified leading the unwilling into the unnecessary for no apparent reason. And I raised that because as we talk about the three Ps, we talk about our people. People is paramount to the operations and the success of this institution. So FAMU has embarked upon some operational efficiencies, recently adopted and installed the workday system. And workday, I just installed it at my institution, is a very robust and dynamic system. It has allowed us to change in light speed years, the way we understand how we operate. But we have to be able to give our people the tools that they need to be successful. So in my vision and my goal is to bring operational efficiencies to FAMU by way of the way we procure things, the way how we budget, the way how we service the campus by way of shared services and quite honestly, understanding what is our budget model and give us greater transparency in terms of how we should operate. And then last and foremost, how we hire onboard and provide customer service to the campus. Hiring and onboarding is going to be extremely important because what we are seeing coming forward is the need to hire and retain world-class faculty. So operational efficiencies will be my second point that I'd like you to keep at top of mind. So my next maxim that I would use is where there's a will, we must be in it. And that's primarily grieving the fact that our ways in diversification of our revenue means that we have to go after resources wherever they are. The third item that I'd like you to keep top of mind is programmatic enhancement. Student success and well-being is paramount to this institution's legacy, to this institution's success. There is no other substitute for what we do for our students. Without our students, we don't have a university. We're on the cusp of getting R one status, the Carnegie classification. I think that's something that's definitely needed and warranted, not only just to say that we have it, but to make sure that it unlocks other opportunities for us to progress as an institution. And then we have the programs of strategic emphasis. That is a focus of the Board of Governors and the state university system of Florida. So the programs that we're offering, the instructions provided in graduating students in those areas is going to be of extreme importance and has to be enhanced, especially if we're trying to meet the metrics that provide the funding to the institution. We have to be mindful of public service, town and gown relationships, not only town and gown locally in Tallahassee, but town and gown across the state and across the nation. Our athletics programs, our athletics programs are the front door to the university. No division one successful R one institution, I recently learned, does not have every last one of them have football. Or they have some sense of academic and athletic mix. We have to strengthen that. And more importantly, for HBCU culture, HBCU legacy, if you will, is the marching band. Band is a part of our culture. The FAMU Marching One Hundred is world renowned. When I first got to the United States and I attended Howard University, the first game when FAMU came up to Washington D.C., everybody came to watch the band. So one thing I'll say, maxim number four, we can't fix what we won't face. Unfortunately, what happens a lot of times is when you get comfortable within the ethos, the, the atmosphere that you're in, you find yourself saying and you're settling. But there are things around you that can always be continuously improved and you can't fix, fix them if you won't face them. So the, the fourth area that I would put forward to the board today is engaging external stakeholders. FAMU is a public institution. And because it's a public institution, it needs the support of the legislature. It needs the support of the Board of Governors. It needs the support cross-collaboratively with its member institutions in the S U S. It needs the collaboration of the city. And more importantly, to drive the continuing operational excellence of the institution, we need to also partner with the federal funding agencies despite what we're seeing happening today. The Southwestern Athletic Conference is going to go through probably a shakeup in some ways as we take a look at what's happening with the house settlement and what will happen with athletics in the coming days. So the last maxim that I would share is be careful not to confuse our Ms. What are our Ms? Our Ms are money and mechanics. And oftentimes, it's a chicken and egg syndrome, but when you come into a new institution or you might be in that institution for some time, you will take a look at the money, always need money, cash is king. But the mechanics of how to get the money is where we often stumble. Now, if you're a well-resourced institution, then Ms are a little bit different. But in the case of FAMU, we have to take a look at those holistically and with greater sense of purpose. So the road ahead, for me, what I would like to do is to break down my goals into a one-year goal, two to four-year goals, and then five years and beyond. So as I mentioned before, the short-term goals are all about understanding and assessing the organization. We have to stabilize our sources of funding. We have to review and assess the organization's structure. We have to review our operations to drive academic and student success. And I stress both academic and student success. Everything is on the table. And most importantly, in this day and age, especially around a strategy of revenue divestionation, we have to engage all, re-engage all stakeholders, especially the alumni. In intermediate goals two and four, we will operationalize the lessons learned from our year one, continue the deployment of the tenants of the strategic plan boldly striking, marrying that with the S U S thirty from the Board of Governors. The brand of FAMU is strong, but we can make it stronger. And making that brand strong is also going to bring with it additional resources. We need to increase the research enterprise to achieve the R one status. The Carnegie classifications were just changed this past spring and we will continue to move in that direction, not only to achieve R one status, but to actually excel in it. And in the long-term goals, primarily just when you're stabilized, we will either be or be close to becoming a preeminent institution in the S U S, unlocking anywhere from thirty-five to forty million dollars in recurring fund on an annualized basis. Right now, FAMU does not partake in that opportunity. We would have achieved the R one classification and our relationships with the state, local and federal legislatures are strengthened. And FAMU will be in the top fifty public institution as noted by the U.S. News and World Report. So for, how do you bring all of this? One of the questions that was in the, the lead-up or we were asked to respond to is what makes you uniquely qualified for this job? So I would like to start by just walking through my career journey in not only higher ed, but coming through as a professional. As I said, I'm a Howard University graduate. I came from the island of Jamaica and I, I went to Howard University in a track and field scholarship and I graduated. My career did not start in higher education. My career started in corporate America at Deloitte and Touche as an auditor. And the United Negro College Fund was one of my clients. And one day, Bill Gray saw me working and said, would you join the United Negro College Fund to help turn this around? And lo and behold, a year and a half in, I was given the opportunity to work alongside him to raise a significant amount of money. The Gates Millennium Scholars Program is the first thing that I would just point out here and what we have done. So in terms of fundraising, I've, I've done that, done that very, very well, I, I would like to think. And that's number one. Number two, I didn't, my first foray into higher education was Johnson C. Smith University, a small liberal arts institution, a hundred and fifty plus years old. And I was hired by Dr. Dorothy Calza Yancey. She saw what I did to transform the United Negro College Fund. And she asked me if I would become her chief financial officer at about thirty-two, thirty-three years old. And what I did there was to create the first ever, working alongside Dr. Yancey, put that institution on a path to success and transformed all things happening at that institution. I then moved on to Ithaca College, and this is a little bit of a twist. Yes, finance is my background. But then I became more than just a finance leader. I became more of a campus leader. In twenty fifteen, I think everyone can recall what happened in Missouri. And then we, it actually made its way up to the Northeast and we had a situation with racial tensions on our campus. And that's when I started to be known for someone who is of a humanistic, if you will, side to me. And this is what I did here at Ithaca College, calming tensions on the campus, racial tensions, understanding being the only vice president of color. It was for me to step up and get that institution to heal and rebuild and move itself forward. And then I was gracious enough or grateful enough to, to go over to Cornell University. They saw what I did over at Ithaca College and they asked if I would come over and they created a reopen the vice president position for me to come. And lo and behold, two years, a year and a half in, I was part of a team to close the, the creation of Cornell Tech, which is an eight hundred million dollar campus on Roosevelt Island in Manhattan. And being the vice president of finance and later the treasurer, it was my responsibility for transactions flowing to and from that campus as well. And then I left there and I ended up at Morehouse College once again, doing not only the work of a CFO, but basically being a campus leader in more ways than one, be it on the academic side, working closely with the provost, but once again, doing things that were transformative for that institution. I created, maybe if you might have known, Robert Smith paid off the loans of all of those students. I had to create that program from scratch. Once again, that's another thing that I have been doing over the course of my career. And also helping folks to understand that it is the little things that drive operational excellence. Oprah Winfrey there, we had a situation where she had given a gift and the relationship had soured. But working with, just simply changing how we operated, working with the president and the VP of Advancement, she came back and came back with us a thirteen million dollar gift on the spot. And then if, my current institution is UCF and what I've had to do there is I came in and in the, in the last three years has transformed not only the financial and operational practices, but I've also created a new framework, if you will, for how the institution will manage its finances, how it communicates to the internal and external world and how the curriculum, how research and soon to be, we're hoping we will become a preeminent institution in the state of, the state university system. All of that was what my task to do within the last three to four years. And then the last maxim, the family is a community of love where each of us learns to relate to others and to the world around us. So this is me from the personal side of things. I, I am a husband. I am a father. I am an author and I'm someone who tries to give back to higher education in any way and shape that I can. I will say this, William H. Gray was the fourth president here at the Florida A and M Institution. I never realized how important Mr. Gray was because he had a son, William H. Gray the third. And he became my boss at the United Negro College Fund. I never understood why he would have asked me to leave Deloitte and Touche. But it's not until later I come to realize that he had a purpose for me that I could not see. So he brought me into that organization and he kept saying to me, Gerald, we got to take care of these schools. We have to take care of these schools. And what you're seeing on this screen is not only my legacy of being a Howard University grad, but being at Johnson C. Smith as a turnaround effort, being at Morehouse College as a turnaround effort. But is why I also wrote that book. It's to inspire young people to go to a station in life that they currently are not. And also to help our HBCUs. I go around the country, I do calls, I help board members, I help presidents to, to shore up their institutions, all HBCUs, because we need them now more than ever. And it's not until recently, those words from Mr. Gray resonate with me. Take care of these institutions. And that's why I'm standing here before you today, because I believe I can take care of Florida A and M Institute, University, given what I'm seeing in its current dispensation in time. And madam, madam chair, that concludes my presentation. Oh, I, I left off one. I have to show that one. If you go back to that last one. The last slide. So in my research, the dark clouds gather on the horizon when thunder and lightning pierce the skies, when faith is but a glare in the eye of the fallen rattler and hope, a lost friend. When the sinew of the chest grows weary from those hard-charging linebackers and the muscles in the legs grow tired from those hard-charging running backs, you must always remember as the rattlers will strike, strike and strike again. Hopefully, hopefully in time I'll be able to recite that off the top of my head and I'll get that strike correct. But why do I say, and what did I close with that? Higher education today is at a crossroads. The crossroads is simply this. There is not enough resources to go around. And those that are at a level to compete will compete at that level, but others will get left behind. Be it if you're private and or public. FAMU is in the number one system in the state of, in, in the country, the number one system in the country. But it currently needs to get to a different place. And I firmly and honestly believe that I am the person to be able to take it to that point. And madam chair, with that, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hector. You gotta get a little.
You gotta get a.
It's all about the risk.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you so much for that presentation. We'll move into the question and answer period with the board. FAMU seeks a bold, innovative, inspirational and strategic visionary who will be an unwavering champion for students and the programs that have driven the institution's momentum. Tell us about a time when you developed a strategic vision to improve outcomes and performance for a large, complex organization. What challenges did you face? How did you overcome them and what was the outcome?
Absolutely. I'll use my current experience here at the University of Central Florida. I was hired at the University of Central Florida after it had gone through a, a tumultuous time. It had Trevor Colburn Hall is, is what everyone probably would know about and the expenditure of funds, different wrong color of funds. And at that time I was still at Cornell University and a colleague asked me if I would think about leaving and coming, I was, I was moving down south and said, would you come to UCF and take a look? I've never heard of UCF before and came down, wonderful institution. I'm not sure why more people didn't know of UCF. I call it a diamond in the rough. However, I did not get the, the temporary position, temporary president said he was going to do it. So that's how I ended up at Morehouse. When Dr. Alexander Cartwright came to UCF, I was his first hire. And I was given the task, fix it. So not only did I have to fix it, what did I have to fix? When I got there, the first thing he told me, he wanted to take a look at making reductions in the budget because the state was going to make a reduction and he couldn't do it. He didn't know how to get the information, so he had to cut across the board. So coming in, I knew that I had a task in order to address it. So what did I have to do? I had to basically transform the entire financial and operations of the institution from a finance, facilities and operations standpoint. So what did we do? First of all, I hired a very, an excellent vice president of facilities and then we hired a real estate person, first time in the university's history. But at the same time, we were working on the finances. What we had to figure out is why do we have so much carry forward? Why do we have so many areas still asking for funds and it's not there? But we did not have an ERP system. When the state university system devolved, everybody got their own ERP system. So what I had to do was to install Workday, install Workday Adaptive Planning, which is the budget arm of Workday. I had to institute a new budget model. We were looking at an RCM budget model. And then I had to also launch shared services in terms of how we operate the campus. So all of those went live on July one, twenty twenty-two. They said to me, Gerald, you were crazy for doing it, going live with all of those four things at the same time. Well, as I'm standing here today, I can say to you that not only are the finances better understood at the University of Central Florida, every month the president gets what's called a management and discussion analysis, an M D N A that shows the finances of all colleges, all units, all campuses on one sheet of paper. And the Board of Trustees gets a quarterly report forty-five days after every close of a quarter. Not only that, we have gone through and we have revamped and revitalized how we deal with our facilities. So much so, this upcoming June board meeting, we will probably be invited to speak about how did we do that to get our space utilization done in such a way that now we know the space utilization, the uses of our buildings, where we can save money from our buildings. And more importantly, we're now operating the University of Central Florida like a business. It is the business of higher education. And before that, we did not have that. I'm, I'm very proud of the team that did that. It was some very, very hard and long nights. But what I had to do is to get everyone focused on the fact that if we put in the hard work upfront, we can enjoy the fruits of that labor. And now the University of Central Florida is on the cusp of becoming a preeminent institution. So taking it from where it did not have materials and things flowing in a way that allowed to make data-driven decisions, we are now making data-driven, data-driven decisions on a regular and consistent basis. No more anecdotes, no more, this is how things used to be. What does the data say? And, and that's what we have been able to do. And I'm very proud to have led that effort along with a remarkable team of finance folks, facilities folks, and just an operational team that's second to none.
Thank you. So let's talk about decision-making. Leading a university requires a confident and perceptive administrator who can make difficult decisions and pursue strategic courses of action. Tell us about a challenge you faced, a risk you took or a stance you made that was unpopular among different constituencies. Describe the situation, how you navigated through it, why you made the decisions that you did and the result.
Sure. I, I'll use my experience at Morehouse College as, as, as the response to this one. When I was asked to come to Morehouse College, I did not know what I was getting into. So the president of Morehouse, the, the exceptional David Thomas asked me if I would come and consider joining him. So Morehouse obviously is one of the premier HBCUs in the country. And I said to him, yes, I'll. And I said to him, yes, I'll, I'll consider. So if they could send me some financial statements. And he sent me the financial statements and from a flight from Syracuse, New York to Atlanta, Georgia, I read the financial statements and I met with him later that afternoon for lunch. And I told him, you don't have a budget problem. You have a cash flow problem. And from there, I decided that we, he said, okay, how do we fix this? I said, sir, you be president and I'll be the CFO, administrator, the EVP to get this moving. And we had to make some very unpopular decisions. Some of those decisions meant that we have to dial back certain things. As Dean Lawrence Carter said there, Mr. Hector, you gave that presentation and now I realize we have traditions we can no longer afford. So what would, what were the decisions that we had to make? First things first, I had to take the entire campus through an eleven-year review of the finances of Morehouse College, showing them over the eleven years how we have morphed from an institution that was cash, cash-rich to one that's now asset-rich but cash-poor. And show that, and then also say, this is what we need to do. Now here is the tough decision, and this is where leaders must lead. You can't lead by thumb-suck and sticking your hand up in the wind to see which way it's blowing. We made the decision that we're gonna have to look at probably layoffs, furloughs and things of that nature. Well, that didn't go well. Because even though we described the finances and that it could not work, the faculty said, we're gonna walk out. Now, we were not gonna have that happen because at the end of the day, the only people that would be harmed were the students. So we had to shift our tactics and how we shifted our tactics was this is where data and the hu- the humanistic side of a leader kicks in. And what we did was we slowed things down a little bit and became more purposeful. So I formed a budget committee, placed on that committee, faculty, placed on that committee, students, and basically tried to get them to sit in the role of the CFO and then have them to understand, well, how would you do this without some of the actions that needs to be taken? So we, then we created, uh, we went through and we did an activity-based costing exercise to cost out all the academic programs at Morehouse College to figure out how much does it cost to educate a Morehouse Tiger? We showed that to them. We also created for them, an opportunity for them to see just how the university functions. And I'm here to say those hard decisions and those steps that we took were paramount, such that Morehouse is now at a different place. Its finances have turned around. Its debt profile is way down. And Dr. David Thomas will retire this year, putting the university in a position for the next leader, who probably will be announced at nine o'clock today to take Morehouse up to that next level. So decision-making is key, but you have to make decisions based on data. But you also have to bring people into the conversation. You have to be transparent. If you're not transparent, then you're gonna have challenges. There's an expression that I use a lot. When people don't know, they make stuff up. And they make stuff up on the regular because they're ignorant as to the facts. Emotions get in the way and we make decisions that satisfies us for today, but hurts the institution in the long run. So those are the decisions that I made and the outcomes now are what we're seeing. And Morehouse is back where it's supposed to be. You know, highly ranked HBCU, but its finances have been turned around.
Thank you. Just to clarify, you mentioned, um, that the initial plan was furloughs and layoffs. What was the actual implemented plan that led to those results?
So the actual implemented plan was, uh, Dr. David Thomas, we dipped into reserves. That's a risk reward. But Dr. David Thomas went on a fundraising, I would say fundraising tier. Dr. Thomas has raised in his tenure more funds than all other presidents combined. So the CFO and the president and the provost, the triangulation, if you will, of those three positions is what drove that. So we took a calculated risk, but the risk was well worth it because we could not have students. Um, suffering might be too strong of a word, but students being disadvantaged because faculty decided that they want to walk out.
Thank you. So the ideal candidate must integrate with external constituents, inspire excellence, and bring exceptional experience and enthusiasm for leadership within and beyond the walls of the institution to actively fundraise and promote the university externally. From your perspective, what are the pillars of the FAMU brand? And what would your elevator pitch be if you were pitching to a potential donor for a transformative gift? Encouraging a potential student or parent to choose FAMU? Or engaging an alumni or community member to increase their support of the university?
My approach would be, the university sells itself. The university is the number one public HBCU in the nation. It's ranked number three for all HBCUs. There are a hundred and four HBCUs in this nation. So the university would sell itself and primarily the academic rigor, the top-flight research that's done here, that would sell itself. The elevator pitch for me would be making an investment in FAMU is making an investment in the future of the United States, the state of Florida and the United States. Why is that important? That is important because we're going through what I would consider the fifth industrial revolution in this country. And we're going through it and oftentimes we are not where we need to be. AI is something that is still new to many, but for those who are more progressive in their leadership, they have already embraced it. You're seeing it now being embraced more often than not. So the elevator pitch would simply be investing in FAMU is investing in the future stability and the future, um, results of this great nation, this state of Florida and this great nation. Um, in terms of the pillars for FAMU, that is definitely going to be the number one. Number two, that has to be undergirded by a brand. The brand of FAMU is strong. The brand of FAMU can be stronger. And the next leader of this institution will have to find a way to get that brand out there more. What is the consistency of that brand? What is the potency of that brand? Who is talking about that brand outside of those that know of it the most? When I was at the United Negro College Fund, the slogan there was, a mind is a terrible thing to waste. We have heard time and time again, that's bad English. But FAMU, what's the tagline for FAMU? I do believe that the next president has an opportunity inside this fifth industrial revolution to come up with that name, that, that line, if you will, tagline that can get FAMU's name out there further, out there with more impact, not only nationally, but international. The number one HBC, public HBCU in the nation should be known and be at the tip of everybody's tongue. What are you, what will you be known for? Is it academics? Is it social mobility? Is it the research? Is it learning outcomes? So I think the next leader will have to be able to do that. Uh, in terms of the relationships, I don't know of any institution in the United States right now that can survive in this environment of declining enrollments in terms of students graduating from high school. Um, learning outcomes that are needing to be reshaped and don't engage external partners. You're gonna have to engage external partners for your programs. I always look at Georgia Tech as an example. If you go to Georgia Tech's campus, almost every building on that campus has a named sponsor. And I think philanthropy, I think public-private partnerships. I think fundraising at the highest levels, not, not just in the wells that we've always gone to. We're gonna have to look at not only just alums, but private foundations, public corporations, the whole nine yards to get that there. So the external-facing role of the presidency of any institution is just as important. A, a year or two ago, I was reminded of the fact, oh, if someone asked me a question, do you think a president should be an administrative president, an academic president, or a fundraising president? Because fundraising plays such a key, important part. And my answer is, the successful leaders that I have worked with, the Dorothy Cowsel Yancy, the David Thomases of the world, they do all three and they do them well. So that would be how I position, um, FAMU, um, engaging students. I'm a, I'm a product of an HBCU. I came from a foreign country. Howard University did for me what I envisioned happening for many, many young people of color. Not only of color, but to give them that purpose, that drive. The H, FAMU is that place. Yes, you're not, FAMU is not number one on accident. FAMU is the number one because it's been intentional, it's been purposeful. And the next leader has to be able to convince the students, the National Merit Scholars and all of those that are out there, that this is the place to be if you want to not only ex- uh, excel, but become the world leaders that we know they can all be.
Thank you so much. Trustees will now open the floor for questions. I see trustee Brown, you're recognized.
Good morning. Um, how are you doing this morning?
Doing well, sir, doing well. How are you?
I'm doing good. Great to see you this morning. Um, my name is Dr. Jamal Brown. I'm the president of the Faculty Senate and trustee. Um, I wanted to give a little background about some of the questions, um, that I was gonna ask. So we had about four hundred and fifty faculty and staff across the university that registered to jointly put together some strategic priorities. And so we have a list of strategic priorities that I'll ask some questions from. Um, we also launched a survey that was across the entire campus from all colleges and schools with a wide variety of diversity. Um, and so it kind of gives the background of where we are. Um, the first question I was gonna ask is titled, who are our peers? According to the National Education Association's Higher Education Salary Report for doctoral programs in Florida, FAMU is ranked last in the assistant professor category, last for the associate professors, and seventh out of tenth for full professors for salary. FAMU recently completed a compensation study. However, faculty and staff were disappointed that the body of faculty and staff did not have the input in the study. The study did not have schools with comparable professional programs and that the study excluded the majority of the SUS schools. Additionally, our K through twelve school FAMU DRS was completely excluded from the compensation study, although they consistently make lower salaries than their state and county peers. Here's the question. If selected as president, what is your vision for benchmarking faculty and staff salaries to stay competitive with other SUS peers for the university and for county and lab school peers across the state for FAMU DRS?
Thank you for the question. I think first and foremost, being a part of the state university system, that's the first place that we look. As currently the Chief Financial Officer for the University of Central Florida, we look across all other eleven in terms of what we're doing. Now, the question becomes, and this is where the rubber meets the road, can we afford it? Now, one of the things that I would definitely would like to do is to sit with the campus community and let the campus community know how FAMU is funded. Um, without the resources, you, you can have the biggest visions that you may have. But without the resources, we have to understand the resources first. There's something that I share with people quite a bit. I say to them, if you have a vision and no resources to pay for it, that's a wishing or at a minimum a clearly articulated hope. And oftentimes, when you're trying to drive change, you have to start with the basics. And the basics are, how much are you bringing in and what can you afford? And if they can't afford it, what are the opportunities for you to position yourself to afford it? One of the things with salaries, especially here in the SUS, the biggest issue that we have to resolve is if we haven't had a tuition increase in thirteen years, but we have to partake of the growth in the state appropriations to the SUS. To partake of that SUS growth, if you will, you will have to meet metrics. How do we position ourselves to meet those metrics to get the resources on a recurring basis? So we can actually get more funds in to look at it. That's, that's number one. That's the baseline. Secondly, we should do a compensation study. We should look at the bands, the salary bands, not only of faculty, staff as well. Now, in a higher education institution, the faculty compensation is separate and distinct in many ways because the faculty is oftentimes kind of outside. But that's not, that's, that does not take away from the fact that we have to pay our faculty a competitive wage. So comparing yourselves to the SUS peers, that's number one because that's foundational, because that's where we live. But number two, if we're gonna be going to an R1 status, my personal belief is we need to have aspirational institutions that are already R1, probably inside the state of Florida, but also outside. We need to look at the utopian sense of what is the output of researchers at that institution in terms of uh, refereeing articles, um, extra activities, if you will, their research portfolio. Are they getting applied research or not? There are a number of variables that we'd have to look at in that regard, but it does not, it does not remove from us the need for us to pay people a proper wage. Now, the third thing that I would say is if we are looking at our resources and we cannot afford it, that becomes a task of the president and the senior leadership team to figure out ways to afford it. That's number one. Number, number two, the study of our compensation levels. And number three is ask, ask ourselves fundamentally, if we are at a level where we can't afford something, what are we willing to give up to redirect funds? Those are very, very tough conversations. So like I mentioned before, Dean Lawrence Carter at Morehouse said, we have traditions we can no longer afford. However, if it's academic related, then we have to figure it out because we have to deliver the academics for the students. One last thing, uh, Mr. Brown, Dr. Brown, that came to mind is that if we can look at both sides of the ledger, if you have to raise more money, you can't do it that way. How do you become more operationally efficient? I give you an example. Right now, we went to shared services on the campus of the University of Central Florida. And we've been there now for two years in the mode of using the systems that we, we, we put in place. And now with the shared services, we can calculate tangibly how much we can return to the academic core by way of saving on administrative needs. So that's the way that I would respond to that and that's the engagement that I would like to have with the faculty. Uh, uh, one last point. I am a big believer that you have to bring everybody to the table in order to have the best thinking to come up with the best solutions. Hiding or doing things and not involving the campus, in my estimation, is a big mistake.
Thank you. Trustee Washington, you're recognized.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Hector. Thank you for being here and you have an amazing president as well. Um, so I, uh, wanna double-click on student success. You mentioned, uh, preeminence is one of your goals and obviously student success is a major part of us getting there. Uh, can you describe a program or project that you developed uh, to improve student success and graduation at your current institution and what the results have been?
So I would go with one directly and one indirectly. So directly, when we were, I was at Johnson C. Smith, our facilities were taking a beating. Um, student success, people oftentimes think about student success just in the classroom. But to have proper student success, you have to have a full student experience. And that full student experience means you can't have residence halls that are challenged. You can't have residence halls in spaces where students can't congregate. So I, I, I set about from my portfolio of work, I set about to basically improve their spaces. We, we improved the union. We gave them spaces within the union. We renovated dorms, we built dorms. Um, we created spaces on that campus was, uh, eighteen sixty-seven. We still had some of the original buildings and we just basically repurposed buildings. So then, after getting through that process, you then hear the student satisfaction going up. I don't think it has a direct correlation to graduation rates, but you could definitely see the student experience has improved. I would say at the University of Central Florida, again, is the most recent one, we changed the way we advise our students. We changed the way we advised our students and we adopted a centralized model. Working with the provost, uh, president saw that we need to get our graduation rates somewhere. Matter of fact, the graduation rates that we're looking at right now is the last hurdle that we're crossing in order to become a preeminent institution. So we changed the whole model. We reallocated resources from the colleges. It was totally decentralized. So the students were getting a cornucopia of advice on how they can complete their four years or five years. Um, but we're keenly on four years. So we, we centralized the entire advising function, all the resources, the dollars, the people, all came centralizing what we call student success and well-being. And now we're sitting on the cusp of those changes. We also follow through and make sure that we ask questions and we hear from professors and we hear from students themselves that it's much better. We have to put the students cent- center to whatever we do. The, the faculty that teaches the students, they also have to realize that the students are here. And if they're not here, they don't necessarily have a job either. The administrative side of it needs to understand that we are overhead. At the end of the day, all of our dollars need to be geared towards student success. So those are two examples of what I have done directly and indirectly, working with a provost to improve our students' outcomes.
Thank you. Trustee Lawson, you're recognized.
Great. Hey, thank you. Uh, Gerald, welcome to campus tremendous presentation. Um, one question is kind of divided into two parts around leadership team. Um, just give me your philosophy on developing a solid um, leadership team and then also if you could share just a little bit about your thoughts around accountability and, and really, you know, driving. you know, driving accountability, um, you know, throughout the organization, starting with your leadership team.
Yes, excellent question. I I believe um there's a philosophy I I've adopted that a mentor of mine said a long time ago. As a leader, your job is to work yourself out of a job. I never understood what that meant until I got into leadership myself and realized that you have to build a team around you of competent individuals, competent in their subject matter expertise and competent not only to lead in their subject matter expertise, but to be a leader on the entire campus. You cannot be a member of the cabinet and not be interested in all aspects of the campus activities, not to be experts, but to be able to do that. How I assess leadership teams is any organization that I go into, I pretty much meet with everyone one-on-one and I ask a simple question. Tell me what you do as you would a four-year-old. And I sit back and oftentimes I pretend as if I don't know anything and have them explain to me how they go about doing what they're doing and how what they do fit into the strategic objectives of the institution. I learn more in those settings than anything else. I manage by walkabout. So I'm not one of those leaders that sits in the 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 president's office or the A building, if you will. I manage by walkabout. I I make sure that I touch everyone that's working within my division. I have a fairly large division at UCF. Um, and I try to make sure that they feel as if they're comfortable. Now, that is the expectation that I have for everyone on my leadership team, even to this day. Now, in terms of accountability, that mnomic device I mentioned, O T, that is a philosophy that I try to get all of my leadership team members to adopt. Ownership. You have to own your job. If you are in a role and you have a title, there is an expectation that you own the functions of that job and you will deliver on those jobs, that job. The A is for accountability. You can't be responsible for something and delegate it away. And if something goes awry, then it's somebody else's fault. That is not good leadership. That is basically, you're sitting in a seat and not necessarily performing the way you should. The T is transparency. I believe in total transparency within confidentiality bounds. If you're not transparent in what you're doing, you do not allow people to see what you're doing and critique it. If you are a leader and all of the ideas for the organization's health, strength, and survival is coming from you, that's an institution in trouble. That's an institution that's gonna go through fits and starts. You have to be transparent about it. And I I the massive University of Central Florida, when I got there, did it at Ithaca College, did it to a small extent at Cornell, is that I created something called Dollars and Cents. And is that every every after every board meeting, we stand before the campus and we say, this is what's happening. This is what transpired at the board meeting. And oh, by the way, here's where our finances are. Here's where our operational um items are. And then finally, the E is empowerment. You have to empower people to do their jobs. I am not one that hovers because I believe that you hire the best and the brightest and you allow them to do what they need to do. However, the expectation is if you are not at the level that we need for the university to run, it is okay. But then professional development plays a key part. And then, as president, I have to make the decision whether or not, how long, I should say, we would keep someone on a developmental path. Because the university's business is not gonna stop. And with the bold plans you have in boldly striking and the plans from the S U S, we have to move with some measure of alacrity. And in doing so, that empowerment piece will also bring with it some decisions that I would have to make as a leader.
Thank you. So I'll ask the next question. You mentioned, uh, Mr. Hector, that we're in a environment with headwinds where there aren't enough resources to go around. When we think about the context of the S U S thirty strategic plan by the Board of Governors, combined with boldly striking, combined with the headwinds, also think about the fact that the um Senate Special Committee on Higher Appropriations is also looking at a new recast of the performance-based funding model. They're also um looking at tiering different universities into different categories. And also think about the historic mission of our university and the composition of students that we serve with among the highest access rate in the state. Fifty-seven percent of our students um Pell Grant eligible. And one of the things I'm very proud of is our social mobility. Um, and being in the top twenty in the country around being able to graduate students who are able to change the economic trajectory of themselves and their family. So thinking about the population that we serve, the headwinds that we're facing, and your desire for FAMU to be preeminent, what are the building blocks that will get us to preeminence with the population of students that we serve, maintaining the historic mission of this great university and continuing to rise and boldly strike?
Excellent question. I would say it starts with the students. Um, I've had unfortunate experience of uh serving with a president that decided that the historical mission of institution was to just automatically cold turkey raise admission standards. That does not work. It gets you away from your your mission on access. I would say two things, and they're core. It's student support in terms of every kind of support that they need to be successful. That is scholarship. In our HBCU world, if you will, our MSI world, uh, one of the reasons that they stop out in terms of our graduation rate is finances. Another one is they might be coming from backgrounds that necessarily the academic preparation might not be there based on where in the country they are. However, as I look at the entrance standards and the the GPAs and the SAT scores, FAMU is attracting very, very talented and gifted young people. So the question becomes for me, I was wrestling with as I'm doing my research, why is the graduation rate where it is? So two things come to mind for me. One is the student support, advising, scholarships. Um, the 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 student experience, if you will, does it and does it involve, does it enshroud, if you will, the student so that the student feel as if I belong here and I'm gonna matriculate here? That's the student aspect of it. The next side of it is, quite honestly, is how are we teaching? The the faculty owns the curriculum. But at the same time, we have to ask ourselves, are are the students not graduating at the levels that the S U S needs in order for us to be in that performance-based funding or, better yet, preeminence? Why am I saying that? And you said it so eloquently. If you look at HBCUs and the population we serve, when HBCUs were founded, they were founded to serve the least of these. And in that, we continue to do that. And FAMU continues to do that very, very well, being number twenty in terms of social mobility. But at the same time, when you look at the metrics from the state university system, as they stand right now, is probably two or three HBCUs in the country that can get to that metric in terms of the four-year graduation rate. And that's that's Spelman College and Howard University and I think Hampton University. You think of the social mobility and you think of the other places. You think of what we accomplished here at FAMU in terms of students progressing, alums doing incredible things. That metric is there for funds to be given, yes. But at the same time, the metric kind of sets us back a little bit because you don't have those students graduating at those levels. So as president, what I would try to do is to strike a balance between the two. Striking the balance between the two would simply mean, how do we look at how we're supporting our students? Are we giving them all that they need in order for them to be successful? That's number one. Have a conversation with the faculty to to understand why they're not matriculating at that level. Have conversation with the students. Is it financial related? Those are three things we can look at in that regard. That's internal. External, we have to start asking the question, putting the FAMU and the HBCU experience in the proper context. That would be with legislatures, that would be with funders, that would be with all of the the stakeholders, if you will, alums who are very, very proud alums. You know, that's how we could tackle that. Uh, the Gates Millennium Scholars Program, for example, Bill Gates realized that students of color were not matriculating. And what he basically said, okay, I am going to set up this program. And this program is gonna be, we're gonna educate twenty thousand minority students, African Americans, Hispanic Americans, Asian Americans, and American Indians. And we're gonna get twenty thousand of them to graduate no loans all the way, in some instances, to PhD. The tenants that were put in place to get that done are still relevant today. So you have an internal portion that's challenging what we do currently, how we allocate our resources. And there is an external portion that will pull alongside the institution. And the president is gonna have to manage both and also challenge the leadership team of the institution to get it done. And once again, it's all about student success in that regard. Now, last point. If we get those student success metrics and if we get the graduation and earnings and everything else, and we're meeting those metrics, then the funds will flow. The tiering that's being considered right now and the recasting, I don't think there's a consensus yet. It's still being talked about. But we still have to survive as you'd ask at the very beginning, the next five years. So how do you do that? You have to look at both your internal and external constituents and ask those tough questions.
Thank you. Trustee Reed, you're recognized.
Thank you, Chair Harper. And thank you so much for your presentation and for joining us today. Uh, question from my perspective is, um, you know, it's so important, a role like this, to be a leader that's extremely holistic. And as you think about uh building a plan that strengthens relationships um holistically, how do you see the opportunity to facilitate that as relate to the community, the alumni, and our key stakeholders? And then the second part of the question is, is what role do you see the university playing in the broader community? And how would you facilitate that?
Yes, excellent questions. The first one is basically the humanistic touch. You gotta invite people into your spaces. Uh, oftentimes, people see presidents and they see them as aloof and they're off to the side. And depending on institution you might be, you might have police officers around them. That is not me. I'm a people person. I derive my energy. I derive my creativity from people. So I will see myself being more so involved in engaging with the alumni. Wherever they are, I would go. Um, locally, same thing, inviting them to events, dinners, getting to know them, rekindling, if you will, why they came to Florida A and M in the first place. So it's that humanistic touch. Um, that has worked well for me over the the course of my career. And quite honestly, in the work that I do in the community, I I serve on several boards. And I also serve on community foundations, uh, even to this day. I serve on Visit Orlando and I serve on uh the Winter Park Institute in Orlando. That's 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 who I am. That's my makeup. I'm not, I can't change. Um, so people will say to me, well, you know, you can't go over here. You can't go over there. My question to them is, why? Why can't I? So if if um I'm not in danger or anything like that, I don't see why I would be. But it's that humanistic touch. You'd have to get them there. I would say in the community and in this city of Tallahassee, FAMU has to be more engaged and more uh purposeful in that engagement. I met a FAMU alum recently and the person said to me, well, you know, we are right there in Tallahassee and a lot of the legislatures have never been to the campus. Now, that was a head scratcher for me because you would have to create those atmospheres for them to come. More so, you got to invite them. Why are you inviting them over? Another example, I just use in in my in my experiences, when we were doing the Gates Millennium Scholars Program way back in nineteen ninety-nine, we had to invite Patty Stonecypher and Bill Gates Senior, Bill Gates's dad. He had to come and visit us at Willow Oaks Corporate Drive in Fairfax, Virginia. And I'll never forget this, and his lesson has stuck with me all this time. Mr. Gray said to us, we don't have a billion dollars, but we need to invite people in who have a billion dollars. But more importantly, we need to look like we are worthy of a billion dollars. And that would be my engagement with this community here in Tallahassee is that we have to show FAMU in a way such that it is an investment. Now, to to Dr. Harper, to Chair Harper's question just now, the president is going to have to cast a vision. The president is going to have to cast uh an ethos, if you will, such that it rivals FSU's. I sit in Orlando, Florida, and when we talk about the financial health of the institutions and you see how far along FSU is, and I'm saying they sit across the train track, why are we not basically in that same vein? That's how I think. So I I think those that would be the way that I would approach it. And I would approach those extremely aggressively because approaching those aggressively also deals with the revenue diversification issue that FAMU is gonna have in the in the short term. And the intermediate term is for us to turn that around.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before I call on additional hands of trustees who have already asked a question, I do want to provide an opportunity for trustee Ganey or trustee Bryant, if you have a question. I don't see your hand raised, but I'd like to provide that opportunity to you before trustees ask a second question. Okay. Seeing non-trustee Washington, you're recognized.
You, Chair Harper. Mr. Hector, you have mentioned, obviously, some of the challenges that higher education is facing regarding funding. And obviously, you know that we are a public university and pretty heavily dependent upon state funds. Um, I'd like you to describe, if you have experience uh securing funding from external resources, specifically legislative appropriations, but obviously uh can include other sources as well.
Uh, my my University of Central Florida is my first public institution. Most of my uh garnering of funds, if you will, has been primarily through the private. So I spent six years with Bill Gray in order to spend a time. He raised two point six billion dollars. Um, I was there, I think, for about one point six billion of it. Um, when we were at Morehouse College with Dr. Thomas, um, we basically, he 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 led it, but obviously I had to be there as his support, being in those spaces along with Ms. Monique Dozier. And we raised well over two hundred plus million dollars during his tenure um when I was there, um, or close to that. Uh, Johnson C. Smith, I got to work with the incredible Dr. Dorothy Calzariency, who is probably, I would say, one of the best presidents uh HBCUs or any institution uh and and watch her and work alongside her raising those funds. So I've done it that way. Um, in the S U S, obviously, there's the LBR and other things that we put forward. But that's a collective effort on our campus. But am I going directly there soliciting? No, that's that's a job for the president. Um, I have made trips up to uh Tallahassee, both the Senate and the House side. But that was primarily around finances and operations. But I would say this much. The skills and the tenants, if you will, of raising money in a private enterprise are no different in a public enterprise. It is all driven by the big idea. Big ideas bring money. I think what hampers us a lot is um this this expression I use quite a bit. It's hard to think big when small got you. And if you're not thinking big or thinking outside the box, you will never get those large resources. You will never get the larger appropriations. When I look at the nursing program here at FAMU and I saw, you know, challenges with the passing and all of that stuff. And then I know from being in the system that nursing is a big issue in Florida. And I sit there and I see my institution basically get a huge allotment such that we can build an entire nursing uh building that will open in August without any debt. My question is, I'm doing my research, what 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 happened to FAMU? Why can't FAMU partake in that? It's all boils down to relationships. And Dr. Alexander Cartwright has has been there now uh five years. What he is focused on is relationships. That's what fundraising is about, be it public and or private. And that that's the same thing that I would endeavor to do here. Now, here, our government relations person, Jamal, he and I will have to probably spend a whole bunch of time, if I'm if I'm successful, on the on the legislative side. But we have to ask ourselves, when we're submitting an LBR, what are we submitting it for? Are we submitting it for programmatic? Are we submitting it for infrastructure? But if we're gonna submit the LBR, we have we have we understood what the needs are on the campus, such that when we take it forward, it can be funded. You don't just take something forward because you have passed a strategic plan and you want them to fund your strategic plan. It it doesn't necessarily work that way. You have to create something that individuals will be willing to invest in, either public or private.
Thank you. I'd like to follow up on that question by asking what your pitch would be to the Florida legislature around funding FAMU.
I have a quick question. Uh, is there a certain order for the questions? Because I've been skipped three times and there are hands that have been up. But I've I've been skipped before trustee Washington, before trustee Reed, before trustee.
Point of order. The chair has discretion to select trustees. Uh, trustee Washington's hand was raised in the room before you saw it online. And we are following the consistent pattern of each trustee being able to ask one question before we're on repeat question. And we are following the consistent pattern of each trustee being able to ask one question before we're on repeat questions. We're on repeat questions at this time. We have two minutes left in the interview. Thank you.
Are you saying that the repeat questions include you? Or are you saying that they do not include the chair as well for repeat questions?
Of course it includes the chair. I'm a trustee. We're going to continue to move forward. I will call you next. So my follow-up question to you is what would be your pitch to the Florida Legislature around funding FAMU?
My pitch to the Florida Legislature will be that you have in your system, the number one public HBCU in the country. It is producing at levels in terms of its research and its academic rigor and its academic progression, if you will, that is disseminating all across this nation, and I would say the world, social entrepreneurs that are lifting up the state of Florida and this nation. Now, FAMU has a historic mission, and that historic mission is this, designed to help the least of these get to another place. And they're doing that in ways that some institution might not have the infrastructure, the history, or the gravitas in this space to get that done. Now, my pitch there would be around the fact, is that something worthy of this legislature to know that you have the number one, number one in the nation residing in your state university system? Now, I would want to be careful of that because I don't want that to ever come off as if we're looking for an exception. Because at the end of the day, excellence is what's going to get you there. And if I can be so fortunate to be the president, the conversations that I'll be having is about excellence, hence my talk, a culture of excellence. And if I have that excellent mindset and it can permeate the ecosystem of FAMU, I do believe a rising tide will lift all boats. And then the legislature will probably be more open to say, look, they're on a trajectory and we need to help them get over the hump. So that would be my pitch to them.
Thank you. I see two final hands. We are at time, but I'm going to recognize those hands and then offer a closing statement to you. Trustee Brown, your hand is not raised anymore. However, do you still have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead, you're recognized.
The second question I had on behalf of the university faculty and staff is titled, Same Goals, Fewer Tools. The following statement was given to university faculty and staff on the survey that we spoke of earlier. The statement reads, the university's infrastructure, staff, faculty, graduate student structure, resources, compensation, training and facilities are ready to obtain and maintain R one status. The greatest response on the survey was disagree, followed by the answer choice, disagree. Employees versus voiced concern of being an S U S standout with a heavier teaching load of fifteen hours, while most faculty at R one programs teach one to two courses, have more teaching assistants, get paid more, and benefit for focused tracks for research, teaching and administration. What are your views on giving faculty and staff the same tools as our S U S peers and completing a needs assessment before going R one?
I, I agree with both. And, and let me tell you why I agree with both. HBCUs in general. Now, when I made earlier that I, part of my ministry, if you will, to HBCUs is I go around the country to meet with their boards just as a favor. Don't get compensated or anything else. The physical plant of our HBCUs, they need to be upgraded. Now, if you're going to go to an R one institution, you're going to have to also upgrade the physical plant. Because if you try to attract, as is in boldly striking and is in S U S thirty, is that we will attract and retain world-renowned faculty. Well, we also have to start with the basics. And the basics are to exactly to your point. Do you have the physical plant and the infrastructure to do that? A needs assessment would have to be done. We recently just did this with our entire space and buildings and everything at UCF. Went from, we call it a FCA, Facility Condition Assessment. And we went through and we knew every building, every square footage of those buildings and what they were capable of and not capable of. And what we know now, it is a strategic priority of our president in that we have to now figure out, how do we obtain wet labs? How do we create teaching spaces, lab spaces that faculty can come into and feel as if they can be productive in those spaces? So that would be number one, and I agree with, with that as well. Number two is the more difficult one, and that is the resources. You, you, you can't, like I said before, to have a vision and no money is a wishing. But that, that leads to frustration. Because now you have said, this is what I want to do, but you do not have the wherewithal to get it done. So you would have to involve the entire campus in that conversation. I say that with this qualifier. The institution has to move with some measure of alacrity to get to that R one status or to get to the metrics that drives the revenues that drives the institution. It is a classic case of not confusing the Ms., money and mechanics. But given where FAMU is and most HBCUs are, we have to do both at the same time. So that means we're going to have to do some work in terms of teaching loads. Obviously, I would have to work closely with the provost. What teaching loads are folks carrying? Is it a three-three? I know some HBCUs have four-fours, or if they're doing research, they're trying to do two-threes. What is the balance? What is it by discipline? How is the provost engaging with the deans? And the deans have the capacity to assess what their needs are. And that's how I would approach it.
Thank you.
Trustee Lawson, you're recognized, and this will be the final question.
I'm sorry Chair Harper, I didn't have my hand up, but I do have one last question. So, Mr. Hector, again, great presentation. Looking at the, going back a few slides, you had some really interesting financial metrics. In, in your opinion, what are the, like the top two or three that we should be looking at ongoing to measure our institutional financial health?
I, I think we need to be, the, the number one is days cash on hand. I would challenge all of you and those that are listening as well to take a look and Google the University of Arizona. You could see what happens when you're in a decentralized environment and you do not have guardrails around that. And every idea is a good idea. Now, I'm not saying that out of judgment. I don't know the facts and circumstances. But what I do know happened to them was they said one thing in terms of their days cash on hand, and it ended up being something else. That led to a firestorm. CFO lost job, president's credibility is down. Bond rating and everything got a hit. You have to have the liquidity to do what you need to do. The other one, there's, there are five of them. There is your operating margin. What is the operating margin? It basically means, do you have the capacity to operate your budget? I, I know I'm a finance professional, I'm a CPA, but one of the things that I pride myself on is educating the campus about how the institution works. You can't just reserve that for the trustees or the senior leadership. You have to explain it to the janitor, the custodian. You got to explain it to the person in the cafeteria. Because what's going to happen is they see cer- certain things moving and certain things that they desire can't move. So I think the days cash on hand, operating margins, your return on net assets. Are we basically expanding the base operations or are we just going through fits and starts? So if I'm so fortunate to be the next president here, that will be something that is ongoing. And quite honestly, would be a requirement for the chief financial officer to be able to engage the campus on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Hector, for your presentation and for your engagement today. You're now welcome to make a closing statement, should you choose.
My statement is this, FAMU sits at a crossroads. That crossroads is not unbeknownst to anybody that's in this industry. As way back as 2014, I wrote a white paper talking about the need to diversify revenues. That was 2014. There, there's no institution in the United States, I believe, that can meet its operating goals, its mission and its objectives by just recruiting and graduating students. That's not going to work. The finances does not work that way. But to see where FAMU is today in terms of its brand, in terms of its rankings, in terms of the gravitas that it has, despite all those challenges, I believe FAMU is on the cusp of even greater success. And that greater success is only going to come if we are willing to take a step back, look at ourselves, and then step back into a mode to say, I have to do things a little bit differently. What does differently mean? This campus has to come together to understand that. Coming together, when I say this campus, I mean alums. I mean corporate interests. I mean legislative interests. We have to get everyone engaged in what's going to be necessary to move FAMU to the next level. It is okay to be where you are in terms of the programmatic outcomes. But if your operational outcomes are causing you to not have passage rates that you should have, banned not being able to travel, banned not being able to be fed, if you follow some of the stuff that people post. What happens there is you have an institution that is great on one hand and not so great in another. And you end up stewing in what I call the quagmire of mediocrity. And that is what we don't want. We want excellence, a culture of excellence. And I would be so grateful if this board and this community will see me for who I am and the opportunity that's before me. And Madam Chair, that's how I'd like to close and say, I'm going to try it again. Is, is it strike, strike, strike again?
We'll keep working on it.
All right, okay, we'll keep working on that.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your engagement today. There's a full activities, day of activities to meet with various constituencies. For those in the audience and watching online, the schedule can be found on the presidential search website. We also have a feedback form that I'll ask the IT team to post. And we invite the community to complete that feedback form for each finalist. And in addition, the Board of Trustees will meet on Friday, May sixteenth, at nine AM Eastern Standard Time to take up action items, including deliberations and voting on the president-elect. Thank you so much for being with us and have a great day.